It is now two o'clock. I'd like to call the City of Ocean Shores Client Commission meeting to order. We're at Ocean Shores Library on Point Brown Avenue in Ocean Shores. If you will call Commissioner Ford.
Here.
Commissioner Carey.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tom.
Here.
Commissioner Mark.
Here.
We have a forum. The first thing I would like to do, it is not on the, well, let's, let's do this. Let's approve the meeting agenda, although we're going to deviate from it. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Approval of the minutes submitted. Make sure, make favors.
I think, um.
When they're submitted in the packet, I think. Did you get the minutes submitted?
Uh, yeah, they should have been in your agenda packet. I think Sam, you know, I'm trying to. Forgot them home, but I, I mean, I have.
Okay, well, then.
And I'm thinking, am I supposed to do that?
No, no, I didn't, I didn't submit it. I thought they were in there when I looked through. But I don't see them now, so we'll, we'll approve them next time. Now, if you are not aware. Are they there?
Yeah.
These ones?
Yeah.
Vote.
Yeah, from two twenty-seven?
Yes.
Okay.
They're in the packet that was.
Said I distributed.
Very good, okay.
Yeah.
So, do I have a, a motion to approve the minutes?
If you haven't had a chance to look at them and it sounds like you haven't, you can just wait until the next.
Next one?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll wait. So, we'll do that next time. The deviation here is, if you haven't heard, the Chair Gary Peace has submitted his resignation. So, he will no longer be with us. Uh, we now have three openings on the Client Commission. So, with that, according to the bylaws. Uh, we, at the next meeting, which it is today, we will hold, um, elections of officers. So, do we have any nominations for Chair?
I nominate. My loss for Chair.
Okay, any other nominations? We have one nomination. If there's no other nominations, is there a vote for Commissioner Wallace to be Chair? All in favor?
Aye.
With that, um, we have election of Vice Chair. Do you have nomination for Vice Chair? I nominate Commissioner Barr for Vice Chair. Any other nominations for Vice Chair? All in favor of Commissioner Barr for Vice Chair? Where's your hand? Aye?
Aye.
That passes, so, thank you. Yeah, Gary had submitted his letter of resignation to the Mayor. So, and he's off on, on vacation. Well deserved, good for him. Okay. Is there any public comments in the room? Yes, sir?
I was unable to attend your, your meeting, I mean, walk, biking, because the school board had a meeting at the exact same time. Will there be notes on that and is there any decisions there?
Um, we passed out, and I will provide you, um. A list of the results, if anybody else would like them. We have the results of our survey that we did. If we talked about those, you'll see on there. Anyone else want to copy that? You have an option. The ones that I have asterisked on there, the asterisk show the, the five projects that were also included into the Parks Board Comprehensive Plan. When Gary returns from his cruise, he's going to establish a walking and biking, um, Facebook group. And we'll be able to monitor our progress through that. Uh, his hope is to have a tour of the shores on the fourteen mile loop, uh, in July of 2025. And so, we'll be working towards that goal, as well as the other projects as highlighted there.
Has this been coordinated with the present mayor? Because I need the last mayors and when it started.
Um, I. I know he's where. I don't know what level of coordination has been done, yes.
So, I believe that this is more in conjunction with the whole Blue.
Blue Zones, right?
Which I started with the last mayor, but it's still rolling forward and is actually a Grace Harbor. So, it's almost a greater thing than that, and I believe that that's what's in conjunction. I don't believe there's anything different going on with the city than what's been established with this group.
Well, we, we do know with Blue Zones, we have not committed any dollars. But what we do know from Blue Zones, they have permitted to help us in two specific areas of our biking and walking Grace Harbor, uh, projects. And that's one, put, um, bike racks around Ocean Shores at their cost for us. And also to provide Q codes on our signage, um, for our projects and for the Parks Department. So, they've agreed to do that at their expense on our behalf, given the Grace Harbor plans that, and Gary and I have attended several meetings with them, and Chris has been here as well. So, that's kind of where we stand. I hope to meet with the Mayor soon, uh, uh, so we can, uh, see what he would like, and that will obviously be on the agenda.
Okay.
Uh, just to get his feel for where he's at.
And online?
Pardon?
Online. If there's any questions.
Any questions online from afar? Good morning.
Good morning, no, or good afternoon. No, I don't have any comments. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome. Okay, the discussions today start with, uh, page three through eight. If you're following along. There's really no changes until we get to page seven. Number ten and eleven.
Just on page four.
Four.
Super. If it's appropriate.
Of course.
Challenges with respect to permanent zoning.
Yes.
Uh, the, the discussions have been involving, uh, reducing, uh, eliminating single-family homes in, in those areas. Particularly Division Twenty. A couple of things I mentioned here. One is that existing homes, which there's, I don't know, I mean, probably fifty, let's say. Uh, would be subject to non-conforming use issues perhaps, if they were to burn down or become incapacitated. What happens in that event? I mean, I don't have an answer, but what happens in that event for rebuilding those houses? With respect to non-conformal use, number one. Is, it would be more difficult to get insurance for those people or not, I don't know. Uh, the other issue is there's, uh, I remember there's about eight B two empty lots in that area right now. They're not very big, they're probably sixty by hundred, hundred feet, hundred ten feet, something like that. None of which are very big for any substantive value of the kind, that's a concern. And, uh, with respect to, right, short-term rentals. Those are the only areas authorized right now for short-term rentals. But yet, there's a conflict in what we call them. We've, we've used the idea that they're commercial use and that's fine. And so, they can be built there, but they can't be built anywhere else. But since we have no particular ordinance regarding that, except for a prohibit in there. Uh, what, uh, when somebody wants to build something down right now as a short-term rental, or perhaps in the future, if we eliminate residential use down there, what exactly are they? We, we, we haven't solved that problem yet without having another uh, issue, another, another ordinance so much, but policies regarding allowing them anywhere else. So, they, they look like houses. But we're seeing they're not. So, what exactly do we do if somebody builds one that looks like a house, they decide to live in it themselves rather than rent it out? I mean, I don't have any answer myself. I got no, I got no dog in a fight, it's, but it is confusing, it's going to be confusing people unless we figure out how to do that.
We've had another discussion, Marshall, what happens if a house burns down and there's no longer any, you know, two years have gone by or whatever, they're no longer able to build a single-family home. They were there, grandfathered in, but now it's burned down. Are, are they going to be allowed perhaps to rebuild on that existing site? Or how's that going to be looked at?
Well, that's where that sunset clause that this body needs to make a recommendation to the council as to how they want to handle the non-conformal use going forward after the sunset clause. In the event that there is a catastrophic failure of the structure, whether that be, you know, fire, flood, whatever.
What's the rule, fifty percent damage?
I, yeah, I'm not able to quote that.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's an issue that we're going to have to, yeah, bear it out.
It definitely falls under challenges, sorry, in definition, A, and then.
Right.
How do we, uh, be?
Yeah, and we'll be talking about definitions here momentarily as we get through the agenda. I looked at the definitions and I was wondering to myself, what others think about the warning to go with some of the, some of the definitions.
Yeah.
So.
I'd have some other thing, I'll get to that now.
Gotcha, yeah. No, it's a very, very good question. If we're going to have to, uh, if we send something forward to the City Council, we're going to have to have to find.
I would rather send something, doesn't mean it would actually pass, right, quite a lot too.
Right.
Well, that's true.
And it may be something that we've got to add into a taxation code, right?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, it is going to be really difficult, no matter what we put up, if it looks like a single-family residence, like a little beach bungalow, which is what typically they look like. I mean, you could say, well, if you're going to be an overnight rental, you can't have a garage or carport. Well, that might be one indicator. But there's still nothing to stop somebody from actually living in there if they're the owner. And you could say, you can't, you can't, but can do are two different things. So, maybe it's the taxation structure that we wanted to say, you know, if this is that, you're going to be paying this tax on it. That's a thought.
Marshall, a little further, Bob?
No, I'm just wrapping my head around what Kerry said. That's, yeah, yeah, that's, that's definitely, uh, an alternative.
Yeah. Okay. So, anything else, uh, besides page seven with, uh, the highlighted items there? Which, on ten and eleven, we have, we have, uh, striked out the mobile home and manufactured home in the first column. And on eleven, the same double wider, larger. That was from before. And the next one was page nine. We can be one zone, retail, commercial. And on seventeen point three four zero two zero D. Uh, D one, we have stricken that out, the residential garages and carports, private workshops, private greenhouses and other uses of a similar or compatible nature. Also to section seventeen point five oh, point one one zero. Any comment there? The next one is on page ten. Seventeen point three four point zero three zero, conditional uses. We have struck, uh, item D, row house and other common wall residential developments where the underlying land is subdivided to allow ownership of the individual lot and house. Then the next one, I think that's the last one on that section. Then we get to B two zoning on page twelve. General commercial. We have highlighted, uh, permitted uses under seventeen point three six point zero two zero. And highlighted is existing one family. Construction of new residential dwellings shall only be permitted for a period of two years after adoption of the ordinance implementing the change. Any comments on that? And then on C, accessory structures and uses as follows. Existing residential garages and carports, private workshops, boat docks, private greenhouses and other uses of a similar and compatible nature. All subject to section seventeen point five zero point one one zero. And then highlighted, construction of new residential garages and carports, private workshops, boat docks, private greenhouses and other uses of a similar and compatible nature shall only be permitted for a period of two years after adoption of the ordinance implementing the change.
Do they need private dock docks?
Yes.
Yes.
Although you're right, that should probably be clarified.
Yeah.
It just says boat docks, it should probably be private.
Could be. You should add private in there.
There's private on everything else.
Any other comments there? On page thirteen. We have previously on seventeen point three six point three zero, zero three zero, conditional uses. We again have taken out D, row houses and other common wall residential developments where the underlying land is subdivided and allow ownership of the individual lot and home. And I think that is the last one of that section. Let's see, no, there's something on seventeen. B three zone, resort, tourist, commercial. There's an additional highlight here. Under seventeen point three seven point zero one zero, purpose. We've added light commercial activities that are compatible. Resort activities are encouraged. Any thoughts about that? We've talked about that before. And then E, transit rentals. Adding something in there about transit rentals, which we have a really, we haven't worked through. Anyone have any thoughts of warning to go with transit rentals? Or should we think about that and come back next time?
I think when we discussed this last time, that's where we started having a conversation about, well, this is really the, the resort tourists where we've got bigger properties usually there. And so, how do we discern a single-family looking structure, cube bungalow, from a single-family residence? I think that's why we just had that faceful in there for how, how do we discuss that? And I would almost recommend that we take one of our meetings and just kind of devote it to really hammering through all the pros and cons of what that means, yeah. I, I just think it, it may even take two meetings.
It would.
Yes.
Because you've got, or that motel road, you've got some of the motels and some old motels that are now so-called, at my observation, long-term residents.
Correct.
Yes.
But in fact, they're, well, who knows the fan right now?
That's very, that's very intriguing.
How do you, how do you define it? And do we define it by saying if you're a hotel, but then it's now doing longer-term kind of rentals, that it can only be a certain percentage of the hotel that you allow for that? I mean, I don't know. It'd be interesting to see what other municipalities have done with that.
How, uh, Marshall, how, how would we be able to enforce that percentage? Would we know a percentage of, say, establishment X has twenty units? How would we know whether they're allowed for, and now they've stretched it to eight or ten units that they're using for that purpose?
Well, it's, it's difficult to enforce, um, you know, just, just on its face, but when, um, when Motel X with twenty rooms decides they want to convert ten of those to long-term rentals, it changes the parking requirements of the establishment. And, um, your long-term rentals require one and a half spaces per unit as opposed to one or short-term rental. Um, and so, they're required to go through a change of use to make sure that they're, you know, in compliance with the off-street parking regulations. And, uh, that's, that's when we would pick up the the amount of conversion, you know, it would be through that change of use, and then it would be authorized a certain amount. If they went over their ten units that they wanted to convert, it would be, you know, extremely difficult, you know, to enforce or even determine whether they are, in fact, renting a place out for more than short-term.
What if they choose not to tell the city?
Yeah.
That they're converting and just try to do it on the slot? Is there any safeguard for, uh, on that?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
What if they already have sufficient parking?
What if you don't have sufficient?
What if they already do?
Oh, if they do have sufficient parking, then we allow the conversion.
But what if they, is parking the only criteria?
There, I, I can't speak to the building code as to what the requirements are. You know, as far as, um, trying to think of the term they use, sanitation and cooking facilities within a, a place.
Many motels have that already, but.
Some do, yeah. Those might be considerations or upgrades that have to be made, uh, in units that maybe don't have that, so.
Should be a fire inspection.
Yeah.
We should take a fire.
There, there's a basically departmental inspection process, um, when somebody, um, makes application for a change of use that goes to police, fire, building, planning and so on. So, if, if those, those are extremely difficult, um, you know, it would, it would take one of those tenants becoming a nuisance in some fashion for the city to be alerted to.
So, someone have to report them.
Yeah, it would be a report type of thing, probably.
Or, or the other issues, you can drive by, and there's one of them over here, just got a cluster box out front. So, you know that they're there for, they're going to be there for longer than a short stay because, but I got a mailbox there. It's pretty obvious that's for more than thirty days.
Yeah. That's a possible tip-off, sure.
What is a change in use for, from a motel apartment if there's sufficient parking already? I haven't encountered that before.
It's, um, it's just a permit process that would, that would go through. Um, and it changes the, the, the rating from the building flood perspective. But it may have to do with where fire extinguishers are located, or whether it has to be sprinkled, or, you know, when you go from one to the other.
It would seem the motel would have more stringent requirements.
It, it does, except for the parking.
Yeah.
Then the parking becomes an issue on the other legs.
Okay.
So, I can dig into that a little bit if you'd like, like clarification. I think it's going to come on the building side of things, building and, and safety.
Seems like a lot of effort for no result.
Yeah.
My thought is just how how do you enforce it?
Yeah. Yeah, especially, yeah.
Well, the, the other thing that I'm kind of thinking about is, is we're talking about eliminating residential living in the B one and B two zones. And, and then we've got apartments or conversions, you know, where in our B one, B two zones, we have large, basically, permanent housing.
Yeah.
So.
And as those older motels become function obsolescent, let's say, they would probably want to convert to, to us.
Some of that's going on currently.
Yeah, yeah, and, and as, as that goes on over the years, nothing usual to, as in up against zoning law of no residences, then then what do they do? For their motel, I, I don't know.
Yeah. Is it a large-scale renovation or a raise and re- reconstruct or, you know?
Probably couldn't be renovated if they're fifty years old, let's say. And everything is wrong.
Yeah.
Any other printed expansion on that? Uh, the next thing on the agenda was definitions. On page twenty-two, it shows, um, seventeen point zero four one five five dwelling structure, followed by dwelling multiple, dwelling one family, dwelling two family, dwelling unit and dwelling unit accessory. And if you go to page twenty-six, if you're following along. On the first one, seventeen point zero four point one five five dwelling. It says dwelling means a building or portion thereof designed exclusively for residential purposes, but not including hotel or motel units designed for short-term occupancy. Does that make any sense, or do we want to look at that definition and perhaps modify, change it?
I think without looking at the, at the other sections of the ordinance as it uses the term, it's really hard to encompass what it exactly would mean by that, because it mentions a couple of other things that are, that thrive here in Zonico. Hotel and motel units, for one.
Yes.
Residential purposes, I don't know. And we, and in the past, what we've done, we've changed certain things without recognizing that it affects something else and completely hit for our goal. And now we're, now we're kind of messed up, so I, I don't know.
I think, I think that's going to be a really big task for us to go through, is once we've got the definitions down, is to have to look through all of seventeen and see how those are being used and does that currently match the definitions that we're now assigning? That's going to be a big job, because you're right, it's all over the place.
Yeah, the trickle-down effects of making a change, what are they?
Yeah.
Well, one example with residential purposes. According to the state Supreme Court, is short-term rentals.
Right.
So, we don't think that, or we might, I don't know, but the court thinks otherwise.
So, we better think that way.
Well.
Yeah, I mean, because it's not, it's not one of those, state Supreme Court says it's transit rentals. We can't just say, well, based on other criteria, our population is in such or doesn't matter. In this case, it, it encompasses the current state.
We could bring them all together, we've done that, but when we start rearranging the definition, not according to what the court may have decided, then there we go, problem.
Then we do, right. So, the dwelling structure seventeen point zero four point one five five, we've made a change here previously. Dwelling structure means a building designed exclusively for residential purposes. And we've struck out individual one-family and multiple dwellings, but not including hotel and motel units designed for short-term occupancy.
So, really the same, same thing as dwelling.
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess my question would be, do we need both of them?
Right.
Do we really need both of those there? In fact, do we need any of them?
And then dwelling multiple, dwelling one family, um, so it just goes down each one of these.
Correct.
They basically say the same. So, could we just do, this is what a dwelling is, and call it that? And incorporate these, or are they that much different? Two-family dwelling seventeen point zero four one point one seven zero. Two-family dwelling means a building designed exclusively for occupancy by two families living separately from each other and containing two dwelling units. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, if I could offer some clarification on why the different definitions.
Okay.
Part of this was to clean. Um, part of this was to clean up the use of, um, table two-ten in seventeen fifty-two hundred. Um, wherein they were talking about uh square footage of a dwelling as opposed to a dwelling structure. And so I think this definition was changed, um, to, to give a more clear definition. We have since, um, discontinued use of the table two-ten and seventeen fifty.
Correct.
Um, so so maybe distinguishing between a dwelling and a dwelling structure. A dwelling meaning a, a single place for a family to occupy with, with, um, independent sanitation facilities. Whereas a dwelling structure would be the same thing, but multiple under a single roof or in a single structure. And we needed to distinguish the difference between the two for the application of that table, so that if that makes sense.
It, it does, but with the table no longer being in use, how does that impact the wording that we want to use to define dwellings going forward?
I'm all for keeping it simple.
Yeah, so I think what we might want to do is table this and so everyone can go through and read each one of these for next meeting and, and come up with what you think we should rewrite or discard to clarify what a dwelling is and how many of these different multiple one-family, two-family unit, a unit accessory, we need to uh keep in our code.
But right with that table gone, I, I think it's probably superfluous. And I think one thing, all codes, not just Ocean Shores, but almost any municipality when you start reading it, it becomes muddier and muddier for the average person to go through and try and figure out, but what is this telling me? At the end of the day, so I think that to better serve our citizens, we should keep as simple as possible.
I agree, uh seventeen point zero four one, oh, I'm sorry, Marshall.
Um, I wanted to back up to dwelling unit accessory, um, there's a lot of code that is, um, associated with that particular definition, um, and as well as, you know, some changes to existing state code.
Mm-hmm.
So I think it's important that we not eliminate the accessory, uh, options that are ADUs.
That's the one I was going to, the point one eight zero.
Okay.
Dwelling unit accessory, which says a dwelling unit that's been added onto, created within or separated from a single-family detached dwelling uh to use as an independent living with provisions for cooking, eating, sanitation and sleeping. That is different than the others that we were just discussing. And so, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely want to define those that we have. We have garages or sheds that are not supposed to be for living purposes, right? But that again is different than the dwelling unit accessory. And maybe a distinction needs to be made between those.
We, we might also consider what these are expected to prevent rather than what they allow because that's how people tend to read what, what I shouldn't do. And so look at him from that point of view. Am I living at all? I don't know.
You're right, if it doesn't say I can't, then I, I assume that I can.
Yeah.
Well, it doesn't say I can't have plumbing in my, my shed here.
And if we want to prevent those things, that's fine, but we should, we should say so.
So I think we'll, we'll look at this next time and maybe come up with, um, some consensus on how we want to handle the wording in these. Does that make any sense?
Mark, can I comment on, on that last discussion, um? Most of the code, um, the current code is written as, um, we determine what is allowed and they give examples of what, what is allowed and if it's not specifically noted as allowed, then it's considered not allowed, um, as far as, um, permitted, conditional and, and prohibited uses within the zones, so, um. It seems to me like they kind of already set up a, a method of communicating allowances and disallowances in the code and, and I guess it would be good to keep with that same.
Makes sense.
Um, if it's not in the code or it's not specifically allowed, um, then it could be considered conditional, um. I think that's the because it wouldn't fall into a variance, it would fall into a conditional use or whatever, and then permitted uses are typically defined within the permitted use section of each individual zone. So I, I guess when you guys are thinking about how, whether you want to allow something or disallow something, unless it's a specific um prohibition that you want to outline, it's not identified in permitted uses, then, um, you know, make the assumption that it's prohibited unless it's identified as permitted.
Makes sense. Then the last one here on, uh, definitions on page thirty-three. Which is seventeen point oh four point four six three. Which talks about public and semi-public uses. Are those which would benefit the community such as parks, playgrounds, cemeteries, golf courses, public and private schools, churches, community centers, childcare centers, fire stations, country clubs, utility substations, hospitals, clinics, transition lines, treatment plans, airports, public offices and similar public and semi-public uses. So again, that's the last one listed for our discussion. So I think next, uh, we'll put that back on the agenda for next meeting and, uh, talk about that and transit rentals and discussion on the next uh agenda. Any questions? Further on the definitions for today? Give the chance to review those for next meeting. Do I have any reports? From commissioners since our last meeting? The reports, Marshall, do you have something else?
Yeah, can I, I, I want to back up just a minute in the definitions, I just happened to notice this and we had a discussion earlier in the meeting about definitions of a transient rental, what it is, um, kind of as a noun. Um, we have a definition as a verb of what transient rental is at the end in seventeen oh four five sixty-seven. Um, you know, the act of renting means the rental or lease for consideration or forbearance of the dwelling for thirty days or less. So I guess when we, when we write the definition for transient rental, consider that there's already a definition in here, um, it, it might be worth merging the two, um, so that we get one definition instead of.
So is a motel transient rental?
Well, it refers to a dwelling, which we have a definition of.
There's a motel dwelling.
And then, huh?
There's a motel dwelling?
Well, if you go up to the definition of a dwelling, I, I think if you find out, um, dwelling is more of a residential type structure. And I think that's consistent with what the court says, so if you, if you derive the, uh, what the transient rental definition as far as the use is, where they use the term dwelling, then, um, you know, a transient rental is not going to be a motel. In a traditional sense, have multiple rooms in a single.
I'm just wondering what our, what our code's going to think of it after we mix.
Well, that's, that's, that's why I brought that to you guys as attention is, that there's already a definition in there, but it's more, more the definition of the act as opposed to the net.
I know the transient rental, I don't know a motel. I get it.
Okay, that's a good catch, thank you.
Okay.
Five, six, seven, that's all I have. Hey, any, uh, public comments from inside the room?
Not a common kind of question, I'm not sure if any of you can answer this, but it's something to be thought about. And it's one of the things that I think we've been working on, um, our EMS fee, the smaller utility bills. There's been a question, you know, the hotel's going to be discounted rate on that and everything. So my question, when these start going to rentals, how does that can affect all of that? So something to think about, not necessarily in your purview, but kind of in your purview, because when they get switched, how is that going to look also?
Is it different?
It is.
It is.
There's, there's two different sections in the utilities and that, and that wood switch, that would be another, um, uh, that's another transition that occurs when there's a change of use applied for uh, from a transient less than thirty days. The utility code has some less than thirty day and more than thirty day uh, as to how the, the bill is applied, is whether they have consumption or not.
Stringer higher.
One of them, well, it can be because they bring consumption into the mix as opposed to.
And it's, it's that, so the hotels, so the residents pay the whole, the whole EMS fee that's in the ordinance. Hotels are only paying forty percent of that EMS fee. So.
But I believe an apartment pays a full share.
Mm-hmm.
Per each, each unit, and if you convert units from less than thirty days to more than thirty days, then those units should be included in the full, uh, the full bill for the utility, or for the utilities, including the ambulance utility.
Yes, and, and that's something that I just want to ensure is getting done because there's still some question about a few of the multi-families and stuff up there that are, whether they are getting individual bill or one meter going in, if they're doing individual bill, um, there were a couple that were still in question last time as we've gone through, so.
I did spend quite a bit of time when I was with the sewer utility, going through with the utility billing office, um, reallocating units to specific structures that were, had a single meter.
Okay.
You know, they, they called it a building, well, it's not a building, it's seven units.
Yeah.
They should be billed seven utility, you know, seven shares, so there has been a significant effort. Matter of fact, I think Sarah was in there when we were working on that, so, um, yeah, that effort has, has been undertaken.
Any other comments in the room? Comments from apart, please.
I don't have any comments, thank you.
Thanks for attending. Okay, our next meeting will be April ninth at two P M here in the Ocean Shores Library. Tom, if you can be the secretary for that, please. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
All motion.
Second. Second, all in favor? Your meeting is adjourned at two forty-three.